All right, we have a full agenda this evening. We'll start off from the very beginning, which is Document 31117. It's the MSBA Oliver Partnership School Borrowing Authorization that was proposed and brought to our attention by Mayor Dan Rivera. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for having us. My name is Anne Marie Stronach, and I am the Chief Operating Officer for Lawrence Public Schools. I'm here tonight very happily to present to you a borrowing article that will need to be read into the record at the City Council. I believe you have that document with you. Do you have a copy of that?
Sure. Does it say it starts order, the City of Lawrence hereby approves the borrowing authorized by the City of Lawrence?
Yes, that the city appropriates the amount of $4 million.
Have the amount on there.
I'm going to give you a copy of this before I leave. This is the revised document that was received by Bond Council.
If you have a copy of that, that'd be helpful.
I will absolutely be happy to give that to you.
Great, thank you.
This is to support the feasibility study. If you remember, you've been seeing me quite a bit here, and we really appreciate your attention to this matter, but this is a core project of the MSBA, which is the Mass School Building Association Authority, and they fund the schools' building projects within the state of Massachusetts. I think before I told you that they receive this money, they get 1% of the tax revenue that the state gets, and then they are very responsible for the way they deliver the money. So this is a very competitive process, and we have submitted a statement of interest for our core building projects. So we have to now, since we've done that part, we now have to go into the feasibility and schematic design process. What that process will do, will tell us, we will have to submit to the MSBA a document that is going to tell them how much it would cost, whether we would have a renovation project, or whether we would be having a rebuild project. So we have to come up with several scenarios to give them, and this is what we believe it is going to cost us to do those studies. We do realize that this is a significant amount of funds, and this is the first step in the building process. The feasibility and schematic design process takes about a year and a half to two years, and at the end of that process, we would have architectural plans, and at that point, we would be going for you and the community to hopefully build a new elementary school.
Please talk to me there, Ms. Stronach, one more time on the timeframe.
The timeframe for this part of the feasibility study is about a year and a half.
Okay, and go through the benchmarks. You just said it, just do it one more time because I didn't have a chance to write that down. The guy, the...
Oh, this would be for the feasibility and schematic design process, and it will take one and a half to two years, and then we would hopefully have a plan in place of what the new building or the rebuild, the rental project, would look like.
So one and a half to two years for the schematic, and then the actual building itself will happen one point, half a year and a half or two years hence?
Yep. It's about, as I told you the first time, that it really takes about five to five and a half years for a project to come to completion with it, starting last year with the statement of interest. The money that we put before you would pay for a project manager as well as an architect.
Is there any historic elements associated with that school?
I'm sorry, can you...
Any historic, is there acoustics back? Can you hear me?
No, I can now. Historic...
Right.
What I would say to you is during this process, similar to what we've done when we looked at the Weatherby School, we would be restoring and trying to maintain anything of historic value. That school is quite old, as you know. It's over 100 years old, and we would maintain those things and bring them into the new building somehow. We did that similarly with the construction when we did the high school. We took some pieces of the high school artwork, things like that. So we would preserve anything that was of historic value. That's one thing a project manager would help us to focus on.
Help me understand a little bit more fully the amount of money. So $4 million for the feasibility, that seems like an awful lot of money.
It is a lot of money, but to be quite honest with you, we did decide to go a little bit on the high side so that we wouldn't have to come back. We may not spend $4 million. We do believe that it could cost up to $3 million because this will also be the architectural plan for whatever we decide to do. So as a part of this project, this stage that we're in right now is the eligibility phase. This phase, in order for us to move to the schematic design and feasibility stage, we have to secure the funds for the schematic design and the feasibility study, so that will require us to hire a project manager. That project manager will be with us throughout the whole thing. That is a very lengthy process that we would have to do through a bidding thing, and you all would be privy to that information as well. Then, once we get a project manager on board, the building committee will then have to do quite a bit of work, extensive work, deciding on proposals to the MSBA for what we're actually going to do. Then, we would get an architect on board, and the architect would go from the feasibility into the schematic design, which would be actually designing whatever is going to replace the Oliver School.
When you say replace, are you talking about total demolition and then saving some aspects of it, or are you renovating it?
What I'm saying is, this part of the stage to MSBA, we have to give them options. So we are in a core project. We're not saying that we're going to do a rebuild. We're not saying that we're going to do a reno. We have to go through the process of the schematic design and the feasibility to see what will best suit the needs of the community.
What's going to be the high end and low end, do you expect for the, after we're finished with this $4 million on all the things you talked about, the design, the schematics, the architecture, and all that stuff? Put that $4 million aside. In addition to that, what is the range that we're looking at for either a rebuild or renovations?
That's really hard, but I'm going to give it my best guess. I am involved in a project right now in my own community, and we're looking at about $100 million. I will tell you, I know that that's a scary number. However, the MSBA, which is a grant program, and there's lots of language in here that protects them because it's a competitive grant, they will be reimbursing us a significant amount of money. As you know, you have been gracious enough to support the accelerated repair project that's happening right now and is almost at completion over at the North Common. That repair project was a $1.5 million project. We've replaced those five old boilers, so the boilers that haven't been replaced since 1965 have brand-new boilers. I don't know, I do have to send you some pictures because it's pretty impressive. And that project, which is $1.5 million, actually is going to cost the city about $300,000. I cannot tell you with certainty what your reimbursement rate is, but what I can tell you is that we have been fortunate enough to be in that 80% bracket for the projects that we've been moving forward on. Typically, a community is at about 60%, but because of the demographics of the city, we're at 80% right now currently today.
And I'm going to let my colleagues here have a chance to ask questions or make statements. I just have one more. So this, ultimately, when this is completed, five years from now at some point or so, this will be classroom space?
Yes.
And again, how many students are we looking to house or to have at that location?
So we are right now, as part of this eligibility process, we're also working on certifying our enrollment, and we are looking towards, the building committee has discussed what the process of that school would look like, but again, that has to be fleshed out in the next process, but we are looking at about a 750-student school would be our hope. The MSBA currently is not interested in building schools of 1,000 or more students as they had previously. They've kind of scaled that down. So right now, they're looking at their maximum number of students that they're building for is about 750. We would like to try to do that if it's possible.
And I promise, this will be my last question on this, just to, once again, remind me of where we are as a school system with regard to space. Remind me as to what projects in the last, let's say, the last four years, what projects have we approved for either expansions or new students, and then walk me through about those, like, in the last four years? And then what we're, including this, what we're anticipating in the near future?
So what I can tell you in the last four years, or I'll use five years, as I've been in this position five years, so in the last five years, the space that we have approved has been, that the city has been supportive of, is the new space at the Phoenix Academy, which houses about 100 students that were not necessarily enrolled in our school system. As you know, that's a challenged population, and we have brought them back into the schools to get their graduation components.
Everett Mills?
Everett Mills, correct.
Yep.
We also have opened up another preschool in kindergarten. I believe that's Lowell Street, what used to be St. Augustine's, and that is the Lawrence Family Development Charter School from Lawrence Public Academy.
What's it called?
Lawrence Public Academy. Sorry.
And that's the old St. Augustine's?
Yep, and those are the two...
And that's kindergarten, go ahead.
Yep, those are the two new ones. We also have...
How many students there?
There are, I want to say about 80 students in that school. Is that about right? I'm pretty good, but don't quote me on that. I'll get you an exact number for that. I'll write that down.
It's just good to get a ballpark. Because I want to see, I want to see what kind of scope we're talking about, which is why I'm asking this question.
Yep.
Continue.
So...
It's okay, I'm in a really good position there.
What I can tell you is that we have been experiencing a very large, significant boom in our enrollment, especially in this quadrant of the city. We have many of our classrooms currently closed in the city, which means that we are no longer able to service kids in their neighborhood schools. And we have just lifted the enrolling numbers at the Arlington Elementary School to support the numbers in there. So typically, we would only have 25 to 27 kids in those classrooms, and we've now increased that because of the need in that area of new enrollments.
So the increase at the Arlington, how many, what's the increase there? Did it require financing to recalibrate the school at all?
It did not require allocating of space, but what it did is it pushed us to hire additional paraprofessionals, because if you have 30 students in a classroom, you need more support than just one teacher.
So how many more students? I'm sorry to cut you there. How many more?
I would have to get you those numbers. I don't work with those on a day-to-day basis, but I can tell you that I am...
So I got two so far, Phoenix and the old St. Augustine's School. Anything else in the rearview mirror?
Well, we, I don't know if you realize that we've just moved out of Lawrence High School. We just moved two programs out of Lawrence High School to alleviate space there for the increased enrollment at Lawrence High School that we've experienced.
So one more time, the new Lawrence High School?
Yep.
I keep, I'm sorry, you call it the North Common, but I call it the old high school. So the new Lawrence High School that's currently existing, you did, what's happening? You moved two classrooms? Say that again.
We took the International School, and we moved the International to the North Common. When the central office moved out, we moved International into that classroom space to increase space at the high school, because we saw a surge there in enrollment.
So how many students did that mean going to the North Common?
120.
120?
Yep. And that program will grow because of the nature of that program. There are newcomers who are 11th and 12th graders to the community.
I know there's more, right?
Yep.
Keep going.
So those are the significant changes. Basically, we are maxing out our space and doing creation and trying to be very creative with our space.
And the next one is the Oliver.
The next one is the Oliver.
So those three, Phoenix, old St. Augustine's, old high school, and some additional, with more professional help in the classroom at the Arlington School.
Yep.
Plus, now, we're looking at the Oliver School.
Yep, and I want to remind you that you also supported a statement of interest for the Leahy School, which we actually had to move two kindergartens out of the Leahy and put them at the Lawler for this school year to have the space that we needed for the fourth and fifth grade in that school, because that seems to be where the bubble is.
Remind me again of the Leahy numbers?
The Leahy has about 525 students in that school.
I'm talking about additional, 500 additional students going on?
Oh, that's probably an additional 50 students. That was two classrooms to the Lawler.
And the Lawler's increased as well?
Yep, because we moved the preschools from the Leahy to the Lawler, the kindergarten, I'm sorry.
How many?
The kindergarten.
How many students?
50.
50 there as well. 50 new at Leahy, 50 new at Lawler.
Correct, because they're kindergarten students, so they're all, that whole group is new.
Is there any more money that the city has been spending on the Lawler? Or is it just...
Just replace the fence while they come tomorrow.
Besides that, we're not talking about new classrooms. There's a statement of interest for Leahy, which is a more significant change, right?
Yep.
At the Leahy School, but it's not happening at the Lawler. We're just somehow integrating 15 new students there.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
And then the Oliver School.
Yep.
Am I missing anything else? Oh, yes?
Yep, and then the Leahy School, I just want to remind you, we put in a statement of interest to replace or rebuild the Leahy as well, and they are, the MSBA is coming on September 28th to see if they're interested in working with us on that project.
And is that the additional 50 through the statement of interest, that project at the Leahy, or is there more than 50 new students?
No, that's just to replace the building because the building is obsolete.
I get that, but, okay, you've answered the question already.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. There's so many moving parts, and we don't, I mean, we deal with the big, as you know, we deal with the bigger picture here, and schools, the factual bricks and mortar is something that we help review to fund.
Yes.
But sometimes it takes this kind of an overview, just to remind us to where we are, and that you were even putting your toe in the water, saying that this may not be enough either.
That's correct.
Because you are looking at the forecast of all these additional units that you're seeing being built throughout the city, and you're saying, I don't know where we're putting these kids.
That's exactly it, and we're in the enrollment certification part with the MSBA currently. That is quite a process. Just so you know, what they're looking at from us is we have to give them, we work with the assessors' office to find out how many building projects are being, how many building permits have been pulled in the last five years, how many are anticipated, the new buildings over across the street from 60 Island, the projects that are coming online, they're looking at the birth rates. It is quite a heavy lift, this enrollment certification. We have done our part. We're waiting to meet with them to review their part.
Could you do me a favor? I'm not going to ask any more questions. On your to-do list, if you don't mind, could you add a follow-up? I have a schedule of all the new units that are going to be brought online and that have been brought online or scheduled to be brought online in the old, mostly old mill locations, right? If you can just give me an updated version of that, there may be some shifts of, maybe some have opened since, and I know some have, and then if there's anything else moving or...
I can give you what we submitted to the MSBA. Do you think that would be helpful and that will have all that information?
I think so. It may repeat, but it might be an update too. So send that, and if it's an update, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
And I'll answer the questions.
Would you prefer that in email or a hot copy to your office?
Email, it'll work, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you. Any colleagues, any questions or comments?
Yep.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Marie, so it says here that the Oliver School, the Oliver Partnership Elementary School Building Committee voted to send it to the council on August 29th, 2017. Is there any additional supporting documentation that they had reviewed? Because what we have here is, you know, before us is the order, the authorization order to fund the project, but is there any supporting documentation that we would review as well?
So what we used in terms of the building committee to decide what the number would be was we used current projects that MSBA has that are online for a project of this scope and looked at other communities and what they are doing.
Okay.
So that's what we used as our gauge for this $4 million.
Okay, so, but we don't necessarily have a more detailed breakdown as to where the $4 million will go overall in the feasibility study that we will...
No, that won't come out until we get the project manager on board and start working on all those things. Again, I realize that this is a large dollar amount, but we don't want to be caught and not have the money and have to come back and say, we didn't do our homework, we didn't do enough, and we're going to have to come back for more. This is a pretty sizable project. What's unique about Lawrence is we're landlocked, and the Oliver School is in a landlocked area. So that's going to be a challenge for us to take a look at that project. So it is, the MSBA has very strict guidelines on what you now have to build for a school. So for example, if you build a high school, you have to have a science lab, you have to have a gym, you have to have this, that, and the other thing. If you build an elementary school, you don't need a gym, but you do need to have a cafeteria and an auditor, I mean, you don't need to have an auditorium, but you do need to have a gym and a cafeteria. You can't have that all-purpose room that serves as both your gym and your cafeteria. They make you separate those two now. In a building that was built before school food service was even thought of, they don't even have those things in the current school. So what is existing now in terms of the Oliver School is going to look very different just because of the guidelines of what needs to be put into an elementary school. Does that make, am I making any sense? I don't know.
Yeah, no, I mean, it does, but my concern is that, I understand that this is more of a feasibility study, not necessarily the construction yet, but I do think of, you know, the Gilmet School when I'm thinking about big projects like this, and I want to make sure that we are in a position where we will not make the same mistakes that we did before, and I wish for us to be able to have the opportunity to review more detailed information in terms of, you know, what will go on in the feasibility study itself. I know it might be challenging for you to answer that at this point.
I have to, I have to tell you that I very much share that sentiment that, and what I would say to you is that we are going to be very diligent in terms of our RFPs and our request for proposal, and this building committee is committed to do the work upfront because the way you avoid those things is when you're picking your contractor, when you're picking your project manager. Your project manager is probably the most important thing. It's your lynch key, and then next to that, a good architect is also important, but then when you get to your construction management team and whether we're going to do CM at risk or whether we're going to do straight build, so we have to consider those things now upfront, which is why we decided to go a little on the high end, because we want to make sure that we're picking the best. And because, a little bit different than other projects like this, while we are tied to procurement laws, there are ways, because this is a service provider, this is not goods and, you know, this is a service provider. So we should be very careful in when we go out to request for proposal for this project manager and for our architect to avoid those kinds of mistakes that you're talking about and making sure that we have a commissioning agent on board, because quite honestly, your commissioning agent is going to be following up after your construction person to make sure that your HVAC is right from the start. And sometimes you're penny wise and palm foolish when you don't spend the money on commissioning agents. I'm a firm believer in them, especially on a project of this magnitude.
So there's one sentence here that I wish to get a little bit of clarification on. If it's, "The city acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA," and I want to highlight that, "and any feasibility study costs the city encourages in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city." And the portion, when I said I would like to highlight, is "as determined by the MSBA." We are, today, the request is $4 million. Do we have, and, because if we have the $4 million, I know we will be conservative in the expense of it, but has MSBA determined what we should...
So not until do we get, the MSBA makes you front-load everything, because they want to make sure that you have the community's support before you go forward. So in order for us to even get to the feasibility, we have to show them the certified vote that the city is willing to make this commitment. What, I, I'm glad that you highlighted that line, but what that means, and the best way for me to describe this is, we'll get, the next item on your agenda is the accelerated repairs. So we're going to be doing a roof, we're asking you to support a roof project over at the old North Common High School. As a part of that roof project, when we get up there and do the schematic design, we may find that there are points in that roof that we have to do repointing of the cement. That repointing will not be considered part of the roof project and could be not considered an allowable expense, but it's something that we're going to need to do to make sure that the roof is done correctly. So, or when you're building a school, a turf field, for example, they may not pay for a turf field. If the city wants a turf field, they may have to pay for that component. And in some cases, the MSBA used to say, oh, you can pay for that. Now they're like, nope, even if you want it, we're not going to allow you to have that be part of the project. So they're talking about things that are outside the scope of service that you're going to be providing to them.
Okay, so...
And they just want to make sure that everybody understands that upfront, because it is an entitlement grant, and they are very prescriptive in what they pay for and what they don't.
And you know, you mentioned earlier that even though we are requesting a bit more, we are expected to spend in the ballpark of $3 million?
That's what I believe, that's what I believe, but the committee felt that we should take, potentially take some extra funds just in the event that we are going to need it.
Okay.
And by the way, every vote that has to go forward, it has to go through the building committee, so it's not just one person saying that they're going to make these decisions. And I do have a list of the building committee members, if you want them. I can provide that to you as well. I brought that with me tonight.
Yeah, no, I think the City Council should have that list already. We did approve some of the members.
Yes, you did. There were three residents that you had to approve. The other people on the committee are appointed by position, and if they leave, somebody else will, you know, whoever sends in for them will replace them.
Yeah, we do have the list. I appreciate you...
That'd be great. I can hand that to you.
Do we have, and you probably mentioned this, and I might not have heard it.
No worries.
Do we have an estimate time as to when the determination by MSBA will be made? Um, do we have an estimate time as to when the determination by MSBA will be made?
Yes, I do. I have an exact timeline, because this part of the project, which again is called the eligibility phase, again, is very prescriptive, and we have to have everything completed to them by January 26th of 2018. Then in the February board meeting, we will be notified...
January 26th of 2018?
January 26th, 2018, which is next January. Can you believe that?
Wow, that's really quick.
I'm sorry. Anyway, and then in February, they will let us know, because then they're going to review everything that we've had to provide them for this section, and then they will tell us whether or not we've been invited into the feasibility and schematic design, because we have to jump over that hoop as well. And then we have to jump over the next hoop, which is, would be the construction.
So until February 2018, we will not know the actual amount of the grant that MSBA will present to the city of Lawrence for reimbursement?
Right. As part of this, what will happen is we will then sign an agreement with them, and in that agreement, it will delineate exactly what we are going to be reimbursed. So just similar to the other agreement where we got it and it was at 80%, and that comes into you as well. And I did bring a folder with everything in it so that you guys could have...
You are good, because you're getting ahead of my next question, which is, I also highlighted here feasibility study agreement. Is there a draft of it right now?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
Is there a draft of the agreement?
There's not a draft of the agreement. We have to be invited into that before we get the agreement, but...
Okay. What is it that you have with you?
I have a folder that has all the information that might be helpful to you. It has kind of some overviews of the projects and the list of all those things, so...
I think that will be helpful.
Yep.
I would love to see that. Yeah. That's basically, Mr. Iannello. Now, this is more of a finance question directly...
I was going to say, Mr. Iannello's here, because this was actually reviewed by bond council, so if you have any questions on the language, it should go to him. Thank you. Happy to answer anything else you need.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Iannello.
Yep, good evening.
So, we, we've been talking about, you know, the specifics as to what this loan order will do positively for the Oliver School, but now looking at it from a financial perspective, how are we as a city today positioned, you know, to take this additional loan?
Well, we have this planned for on the capital improvement plan, so we are positioned, the five-year forecast will predict how well we do. As Ann Marie mentioned, this is just a feasibility study. The construction, once the feasibility and the schematic design are done, if we get accepted in the program, and MSBA will then tell us how much they would reimburse us, which will be, as Ann Marie mentioned, they're very specific, you don't get 100% reimbursement, and if they give you 80% reimbursement, or say it'll be 80%, it'll probably end up being somewhere between 60 and 70%, because there are certain things that'll be unqualified or they will not reimburse us for. So, we'll be back to the council, excuse me, after the schematic design phase, we'll be back to the council for construction authorization. That'll be in a couple of years from now.
Do we know the form in which the reimbursement will come? Is it going to be one loan sum or is it going to be over a period of time?
Well, the last, the only thing I can go by is the last repair project, which Ann Marie mentioned, we were, that project is eligible for 80% reimbursement. My understanding is that we might still get 80%, but my understanding, generally, it's 75% for a community similar to ours.
But that we know...
But again, the, the actual project cost, because they limit the amount, the dollar amount of construction, so if the bids come in too high, they'll, you know, they only pay $200 bucks a square foot, and if it costs us $233 a square foot, that'll be an excludable cost.
Okay.
And then, as Ann Marie mentioned, turf, legal fees, few other things are not reimbursable, so the final cost of this Oliver School, whatever it may be, we may only end up getting between, you know, it might be 70% reimbursement, might even be closer to 60, even if it's intended to be an 80% reimbursable project, because of all those...
And that's constructions, you're talking now about the construction specifically?
Construction, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just want to be able to separate the construction from the feasibility...
Well, just the feasibility, we're asking for $4 million to make sure they can get the feasibility study done correctly. Again, the MSBA's process is you go by previous projects that they've approved to determine what your estimates will be, and that's what they're reviewing. So, you know, a $4 million number of this project scope is about right, might be a little on the high side, but at least it'll be assured that we can get the feasibility study done in a, in a format that the MSBA would hopefully be receptive and fund. If we did it on the cheap, I think we probably wouldn't get funded. So I think we have to be very thorough. And then, once we get invited to the, if we do get invited to go to the next stage, that's when we'll enter into a feasibility study agreement, and that's where they'll determine how much of this feasibility study we're going to get reimbursed.
All right, wonderful. Okay. Mr. Chair, I don't have any further questions at this point. Thank you, Mr. Iannello.
Is there a motion to send this up with a favorable recommendation?
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, and no discussion? All call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 31217, bond authorization for MSBA accelerated repair projects, roof of the North Common Education Complex, aka the old high school, boiler at the Arlington School, $1.5 million, and a roof at the Arlington School, $2.3 million, brought to the city council by Mayor Dan Rivera. Welcome back.
Welcome back. Thank you very much for supporting that project. I think that this is a great first step for the city of Lawrence and for our students. I was remiss, a little nervous being in front of you, and I forgot to mention that some of the members of the elementary building committee are here with me tonight. We have Rich Dokus, who is responsible for facility part of it. We have Kristin Ando, who is one of the co-leaders at the Oliver Partnership, and we have Christine Befagnar, who is the finance person for the school department. So I just want to thank them for their attendance.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for indulging me.
Okay, give us an overview on this request, please, if you don't mind.
Yep. So, this is a little bit different than the request that I just brought before you, because while we could have come before you with just the cost of the feasibility study for these four, for these three projects, we came with the cost of the entire project. And again, we used current projects that are in the pipeline with the MSBA to come up with, and obviously use the square footage of the roofs to come up with these price at $25 to $30 a square foot. The reason we did this is because when we did the accelerated repair project over the North Common, we did this the same way, and the reason that I had the discussion with the mayor to do it this way is because it gets us a little bit ahead of the curve of the other projects that MSBA. As you can imagine, we're not the only school district who are requesting these accelerated repair projects. They're very specific to kind of a one-time. They want to be able to pick it up and do it and do it within a year. And the reason that it gets us the advantage is because we're able to go out to bid, because we're not coming back to you for the second part of the MSBA project, which is to show them that we got the vote for the funds. What that did at the Oliver, the Old North Common or the old high school, or whatever you want to call it, it allowed us to get a much better rate. So we actually came in under budget in that project, because we were ahead of the game. It also allowed us to finish the project well before some of the other projects that the other cities and towns are doing, and that project is going to be complete on September 15th, which we're very excited about. So that's why the money that you have in front of you is for the entire three projects, not just the feasibility study.
Okay. My question is, when this goes to the full council, you recommended that we read the entire order?
Yes, for both, for both things. You have to read them into the minutes. They're going to require us to prove that we did this.
And Maria, do you have a copy of these? Make sure that we get them in the council agenda for...
Yep.
You got it? Good. Okay.
And they were sent to the, Mr. Iannello just said they were sent to the clerk as well.
Good, as long as they're in the full packet for the council.
...for the all the same...
Very good. So that's going to be for all the council, that was my concern. Any questions by members of the committee?
I hear a motion. Oh, yeah. So, I, wait. We have here that replacement of boiler at the Arlington School specifically. So, when we talk about the boiler, are we talking not only about the heating?
Yes. I think I explained that to you last time. They will not do HVAC, because that would include opening up the building envelope. And again, the accelerated repair project, if you think about it as they can pick it up and put it down and put in a replacement. So, if you were talking HVAC, which would be the chillers and the other units, they would have to go into the walls to correct piping and ventilation systems, and that's not what this project does. This project is for roof, boilers, and windows.
Do we have any other projects to be able to address the AC situation at the Arlington School?
No, I do not. I wish that there was a way for us to, there's, we would love to be able to afford to do the air conditioning at many of our schools. We're working very, very hard. You were, again, gracious last year, helping us with the boilers. We know that all of these things need to be addressed, and we are doing our best, looking at every avenue to try to help fund the capital improvement projects, as well as utilizing the resources that we have within the city. But in order to put air conditioning in the building, that would be quite an expense. And to be, not to be disrespectful, and I know it's hot out today, but to be quite honest with you, I am more concerned with heat than I am with air conditioning. And I feel that our focus should be on our boilers and, rather than our air conditioning. That's my own humble opinion, because we have a lot of work to do in those areas. Many of our schools are well over 75 years old. We have 21 buildings, and that doesn't talk to, speak to the buildings that are outside of the school that the city has to maintain. So, I think our resources are best spent managing our heating needs. Although I would, I would love to find a magic bullet to fix the air conditioning, believe me.
When will the replacement be taking place?
I'm sorry?
When, when are these replacements going to be taking place?
So, similar to the process that I just spoke about, I have to provide the votes to the MSBA, showing them that we've received the support from the community and the city council to help fund these. Once that happens, they will say, "Yes, you've been approved." I believe this is the last piece of the puzzle for these three projects, unlike the eligibility, which we're still working on some pieces. But I would think that they will be done, similar to the project that we just did over here, we'll work on them and we'll probably do them next summer.
Okay.
That's going to be my hope.
There's not going to be any, you know, difficulty with the student body that attends the Arlington School?
We, what we did over at the North Common is we made the project so that it was outside of the scope of student needs. So, if we have to move students to a different school for the summer, we would do that.
Okay.
I don't know if you noticed, but we had to block off the street a couple times to put the beamers down, so, I mean, there is some inconvenience. These are massive projects. The roof projects alone are, they're going to add 25 years to the lives of these buildings. It's pretty impressive. I'm impressed. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Would you care to craft a motion?
Motion to send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
And second, and any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always know the ayes have it. So, just for the staff here, we, just to remind you, we have a full city council meeting next Tuesday. That's Tuesday, the 19th. So this will be up there, and I would hope that you will be here to answer other questions from other members of the...
Well, we saw our members will be able to join us, as well as parents, which we believe that the Oliver Partnership, parents of parents in the year. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. The next item on the agenda is 30917, Office of Planning and Development, request for authorization to receive and approve of many grant expenditures from the National Center for Healthy Housing, $5,000, put on the city council agenda by Evelyn Uraina, the housing manager. Good evening, Ms. Uraina.
Good evening. Evelyn Uraina, 155 Oliver Ave.
If you just wouldn't mind giving us a brief overview of the request?
Sure. This is a grant that we apply for. It's a competitive grant. It's $5,000 from the National Center for Healthy Housing, and it's tech, it's pretty simple. They give grants to, I believe, 10 communities to do awareness on lead poisoning. And so we were granted one of those $5,000 to do an event, CDY, to educate and to just give information on lead poisoning, so that the community is aware of what's going on in the city, and also to give resources and just educate.
Wonderful. So, in a nutshell, we already have lead programs in the city, very important lead prevention programs in the city. Are those also lead remediation programs as well, or just prevention?
Those are lead remediation. We have the, through the Community Development Program, we have $2.9 million, which includes a healthy homes portion as well, and that's lead remediation.
Sure, and so what this is going to do is dovetail nicely. We have $2.9 million, and you probably have some money already set aside for marketing. Looks as though this is an opportunity here for either marketing or education, make people aware that there is this pot of money that we have a significant, I don't want to, we have lead issues in our city and housing. So, give me just a brief flavor of how you're going to get the word out to the people that I represent, that we represent. How are they going to know based, from this grant?
Yes, so we have the, we are fortunate that we have a lot of partners in the city, and so we reach out to all the different communities. We also reach out to the Mayor's Health Task Force. They have a whole range of hospitals and school department. We also use the radio. We use the local newspapers. We talk to all of our clients that have gone through our program already. We also do flyers that we provide around the city, and just any, any event that's happening in the city, we're there, passing out the flyers, passing out information, and just word of mouth is what works best.
Do you have the application in front of you? Did you bring that this evening? Your application for this money?
I do not. I do not have a copy of the application.
Do me a favor, if you don't mind.
I can send it to you.
Do you have my email address? I just want to see, the key point here is the question, it says here that, of course, what kind of type of activities can the funding support? And it says here, priority will be given to communities that demonstrate a need for funding, and here's the point, have a clear plan in place for using the funding, and can articulate the anticipated impact of the funding. So if you could send that to me, I'm curious to see what that answer is, just because I know that this is a big issue in our city. So if you have my email address, you know how to go to hold them, if you can send that, that'd be great.
Yes, I can email, email it to you, but I believe that the answer to that question was that we were going to have this event in place, and we were going to prioritize those affected by the water and lead piping in the city.
Oh, on those 23 houses or so?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
But please send that to me.
Yes.
I don't want to take any more time upon this. Thank you. Any other questions or members of the committee?
No, I'd like to make a motion to send it up to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion's been made. And second, and no further discussion. Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always know the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
See you next week, next Tuesday. Ms. Uraina? Next Tuesday? We'll see you next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Anything else on the agenda, councilors? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always know the ayes have it. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
[inaudible]